The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Okay, it's now seven o'clock, so we begin this January 2nd, 2019. I was always worried I was not going to say that right this evening. Board of Education meeting, I welcome you all. I hope you all had a nice holiday break. And if you'll rise for the National Anthem, we have two choirs this evening that will be performing for us. The Green Hills and West Bristol Combined Choirs under the direction of Mrs. Sykes. And if you remain standing after the anthem, we will do the pledge.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed as the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the red flags we washed were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the homs were singing there. It proved through the night that our flag was still there. All saints, as stars they go, they nary and wave. For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, students and Mrs. Sykes, for joining us this evening. At this point in our agenda, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Walter Ives, who was a principal of Memorial Boulevard Middle School from September 26th of '86 to June 30th of 2006, and a shortage area principal from July 1st, '06 to June 31st, '07, and also for Alda Quilter, who was a secretary at Stafford School from June 27th, '94 to July 19th, '08, and a subsecretary from '44, '14, 2010 to '8, '10, 2016. So let's just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Our first or second item on the agenda is the staff and student recognition, and Dr. Moreau will be at the speaker's podium to bring that to us.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Commissioners.
Happy New Year.
We have a lot of students and staff to recognize tonight. First, there's a whole crew here who just this evening received their checks for their mini-grants from the Business Education Foundation. The foundation began in 1991 to fund innovative programs and mini-grants created by our teachers, and it's continued every single year, and they get more and more creative. I'm going to ask you, since you're all in a row and not sitting there, I'm going to have you stand. If you'll raise your hand when I identify your grant. Bridget Gola has two grants. One is Building the Spirit of Community, and I can find the other one. Cultivating Conversations. We have the Family Resource Center, Linda Rich and Sandra Godden. Two different grants, one called Calm Down Kids to Support Mindful Practices in the Classroom. And I should have done this in advance. Smart Spaces for Students' Social, Emotional Learning Groups. Chippens Hill Middle School, we have Chippens Hill Cares, and that was received by Christy Richard-Don, system principal. Also, Chippens Hill, Kathy Crowe. The grant is Chippens Hill Middle School Helping Hands Program. Jan Rustica, Northeast. Program is called Flexible and Desk Cycle Student Desks for our kids who need to do a little bit of moving while they're learning. Chris Woods from Green Hill School. Gator Makers Making a Difference. Also, Green Hill, Sean Carmody. Having a Ball with Coating. Another Chippens Hill grant, Maker Spaces, Jim DeShane. Morning Matters, Marcy DeShane, Mountain View. Rams Become DaVinci Apprentices, Gina Gallo, Bristol Central High School. Read All About It, Hubble Hounds Are Possum, Lisa Eia. Another grant by Marcy DeShane's in Mountain View called The Reading Garden. Terry Grant, The Compliments Project at Green Hill School. Nicole Shook. Think First at Bristol Central. And finally, You Can Be My Wingman Anytime, Kristen Chiketti at Green Hill School, was accepted by Sopra Bet and Sandra Godden. Total of $19,126, including a special $500 mini-grant designated from the Jim Rogers Memorial Fund. It's a great way to honor someone's life. The foundation is a 501(c)(3), and I'm going to give them a little plug here. Your charitable dollars to this organization have an absolute direct impact on our kids, and many of these programs buy supplies that last for years, so it's not just a one-time thing. Congratulations and thank you all so much. Now, you go, go to your ledges, please. And I have another whole list. So Marcy, don't go anywhere. Carly Bodas, is she here with us? Okay. Come on over here. So this one is very, very cool. We have Carly and Marcy. They teach at Mountain View School, and they were chosen to be the yard goats educator for a game and throw out a pitch. Have you been practicing?
I have a new coach.
Okay, there you go, Jim. Do you know what game?
We have to pick a date.
Okay, that is...
The question I have for you, though, is are you going to be pitching up from up front, or are you going to do it from the mound?
From the mound.
Okay, all right. She didn't hesitate for a second, that's great.
That's awesome. Congratulations. Thank you. And they'll try to, Mountain View School up there on the scoreboard, there? Take pictures for us. Tweet about.
I will.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Gina Rivera, who will be recognized this evening in her new role, oh, she's over there. Gina was appointed to the National Council of Supervisors of Mathematics Board of Directors. Quite a prestigious appointment, and she is tonight going to be appointed as our Elementary STEM Math, Science, Technology, Engineering Coordinator in the Office of Teaching and Learning. So she's going to be able to go to these board meetings and their conferences and bring back latest and greatest to our teachers and train them even further. Congratulations. And we have some students to recognize. Is Madeline Orsadi here?
Come on in here, Madeline. I'm going to go and look at you.
So Madeline's a fifth-grade student at Edgewood School, and she's been honored to be on the Elementary Honors Board for the Connecticut Music Educators Association. What is your name, Chief Press?
I was cleared out.
So have you been practicing?
Mm-hmm.
And so when is your performance?
It's going to...
Okay, so we want to hear, we'll hear back from you, to hear down about how fabulous you are. How noted you've been, fabulous. Congratulations. And next, I would like to see Isabella Arboreo and Caitlin Gonzalez. Would you like to tell the board why you're being honored by the Connecticut Association of Schools? Come on up, this is your time. Okay, so they're getting art awards from the Connecticut Association of Schools. So did you draw, did you paint, did you sculpt?
It was for art class and music.
Art and music?
Yeah.
Wow, that's awesome. And when are you going to be honored?
February 8th.
February 8th, so soon. So congratulations to both of you. Thank you for representing us. And finally, Amelia Salifa. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Amelia? There she is. This is incredibly extraordinary. Omam Kamana. So you can look at our board. You're a fourth grader? You're a really tall fourth grader. She organized a toy drive at Green Hill School for CCMC. Can you tell the board how many toys were collected? Would you like the mic, or you just want to whisper, or can you tell me if this number's correct? 1,564 toys. Thank you so much. I can't imagine the smiles that will continue to be on children's faces at CCMC for quite a while.
It would be fun to keep hearing these great accolades and talking about that, but unfortunately, we have to get back to the mundane part of our agenda. So it's my job to call us back to that. We have had the minutes sent to you in your board packets on Friday, and does anybody have any changes or amendments to the board minutes? If not, I would have to take a motion for approval.
So moved.
So moved and properly made. Moved and properly made. Do we have a second?
I'm interested.
Okay, we did second. Okay, we have, motion has been properly made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go to committee reports. We have personnel, and I believe Commissioner Cagiano is going to provide us with the personnel report.
I will do my best, and I'll ask Ms. Brown to help me if I miss some of these details. I think the main thing that I just wanted to convey was that with the bittersweet retirement of Greg Belanger as a food services director, as well as a transportation director, we are in the need to create more positions. And that's, the easiest way that I can explain this is it's going to take about three people to do what Greg has done for many years. So congratulations to Greg, and unfortunately, we're going to have to make some changes to accommodate him. And basically, what we've done is taken the cafeteria position and have added into that a straight position for the Assistant Director of Food Services, as well as adding a Secretary of Food Services and a Director of Food Services. There's also a Director of Transportation. I won't get too much into the finances of this, and we can ask questions later for the rest of the board, but we do have the information here. The budget differences overall to the cafeteria is $5,912 of additional funds, and the general fund is $11,786. So I think I covered that well.
Yep.
Good.
Any questions? If not, we will move on to, why don't we just let you keep the mic, and you can do operations?
Operations. Don't know that I have them in front of me. Maybe I have it here? So at the Operations Committee meeting, we reviewed our shared services. We had an update. We also had an update from the school's security grant. And then we had a longer discussion about the 10-year capital improvement plan. I will just add, kind of parenthetically, from my standpoint, it's a difficult discussion right now as we're trying to figure out what our system will look like in the future, and that was our discussion. We are going to bring that back up in our January operations meeting, so we did not approve the 10-year capital plan at this point, and we will continue to talk about that. We had an update on the school-based health, or did we table that one? I don't remember.
It was a grant. Dr. Dieter just explained the grant application that's going in.
That's right. Yep, the grant application, I forgot, so I had a little mark there. And finally, we just approved the 2019 meeting calendar. Only note there, I think, is it no February meeting, but regular meeting scheduled the third Tuesday of every month, and that was it.
Very good.
Any questions? If not, we will move on to policy. Tina?
Sure, we had one, we had a very short meeting where we had one policy, and we're going to be voting later in the agenda on revisions to the policy of use of exclusionary timeout settings, and that's later in the agenda.
And Jill, can you, I assume you could do finance, because...
Yes, I have student achievement.
What?
Student achievement.
Oh, okay, all right, yep.
Happy New Year, everyone. Finance Committee met on Monday, December 17th. After the approval of the minutes, I updated the committee with the current budget, which I will share with you now. At the close of November, our financial expenditures remained steady for most of the departments. However, we did see significant movement in the area of special education. Just briefly going through our budget characters and instruction, most of the amounts continue to show as available will be expended prior to year end. We do have approximately $1 million in teacher salaries that is available for transfer in order to mitigate the overage that we're going to see in special education. In transportation, we have two additional regular education runs that were required this year, so transportation is currently running over by $148,000. That's regular education, transportation. Although our special education tuition looked relatively good at the end of quarter one, we have seen significant encumbrances in the month of November. As our final contracts came in and the remaining outplacements were encumbered for the year, we saw a lot of movement, which caused us to have several conversations and find out why are we seeing such movement. And my department, along with Dr. Dieter's department, discovered that we have an increase of 14% in special education students from the time that we planned this budget last year. So that equates to 16 or 17 additional outplaced students. And I shared with the committee that those tuitions can run anywhere from $60,000 a year to $160,000 a year, depending on the needs of the student. And then when we transport the student, that is in addition to the tuition. So when you have an extra 16 or 17 students, we do see a significant change in expenditures. So currently, our line for special education tuition, if you can bear with me for just one moment. Our line for special education tuition currently is over by $2.8 million. However, our state place tuition has almost $900,000 available for transfer to mitigate that. So we're looking at about a $1.8 million deficit in special education tuition. As I said, we do have monies that are available in the instruction line to help us mitigate that deficit, but we are keeping close track of that as we go on through the year. I'll pause for questions at this point.
Just a clarification, so those expenses are all encumbered, so that $1.8 will carry us through the year, again, barring changes, because I know it's a very fluid environment.
Correct. We may have students come in, we may have students go out.
Commissioner Giantonio, I know you were at the Finance Committee meeting, so I want to give you an opportunity to add to anything that was discussed at the committee that Ms. Brown did not address. Something you want to add?
Let me check my notes.
Sure.
I'm glad I brought them.
We didn't know that Commissioner was going to be sick this evening.
I don't have anything additional to add.
Okay, here.
For appropriations and transfers, we had a very quiet, calm month of November. There were no significant transfers to report. The cafeteria continues to operate in the black and is doing very well. That's some good news. And the committee also did set the schedule of meetings for the remainder, for the 2019 meeting calendar. We will continue to meet the third Monday of each month, and there are no changes as we move forward into 2019.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. As Mrs. Brown has already informed you, the special education budget is running in a deficit situation. That volatility is associated with the new enrollment, so students that are moving in that are requiring high-cost placements. Continuing to look at that, we're looking at ways to engage in cost avoidance, as well as savings through shared services of transportation rides, and then reaching out and working with our vendors around reduced rates if we have multiple students placed. As I've been reporting out on our new enrollment, I think it is important to recognize the cumulative effect of new enrollment that exceeds both our average of number of students identified, as well as the state average of students identified. Just a quick snapshot, since we opened doors in September, we had 20% of new enrolled students came already eligible for special education services. Month of October saw 23% of new enrollment arriving eligible for services, and the month of November, we were at 20% again. If we go back to the time when we set our budget in April, that's an average of 19% of new enrollment is arriving already eligible for services. And as has been identified, there's a total of 17 students, newly enrolled students that are requiring placements at a district. As far as other significant numbers, we continue to see trends in the need for risk assessments in our buildings, as well as DCF reporting, really unprecedented numbers, and that was encompassed in the detail of the special education snapshot report provided to the Finance Committee. Be happy to take any questions.
Just a comment, all this information has also been provided to the Board of Finance, correct?
That is correct. We did meet with the Board of Finance prior to the holiday break.
Yeah, Mrs. Brown and Dr. Dieter went to the last Board of Finance meeting, even though we didn't have a regular schedule to be there, and it proved to be quite helpful to give them an update on the information.
Yeah, we had adjusted the frequency with which we meet over there to quarterly, but we had also committed that if there were any significant changes, we would go over. So we did so before the, before the break.
Any questions before they leave? If not, I'll get to student achievement. I didn't forget you.
Can I have one? It's not so much a question, I just would like to call attention to the fact, and I'm looking ahead, which I think this is good. I think I heard that the third Monday of every month will be the Finance meeting now, what part?
Which won't work in February.
Good.
Or in January. So I think those dates were changed. Because of January and February holidays, those dates are not the third Monday, they're the second Monday?
We'll have regular meetings throughout. And I realized that in November and December this year, we had to make arrangements because of the special meeting situation, because of the holidays, I should say. I will just throw out as potentially a best practice, you know, this over-communicating, I think, is great in this time. I think checking with committee members in particular about those meeting schedules is very important. I know that, at least from my standpoint, I don't think those special meetings were arranged ahead of time, and I realize the difficulty in scheduling them was difficult with the November and December months. I've made almost every Finance Committee meeting as a board member and was unable to make the last couple, but it's, these are great updates, but it's really good to be at the meeting as well, too. So my, my general request through the chair is that we have the chairs of these committees, if we have to have a special meeting, check with the members, especially of that committee. I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. So noted. Student Achievement.
So the Student Achievement Committee met on December 19th, right before the Christmas break, and we had an impressive presentation of the data showcases from all of our schools, elementary, middle, and high schools. They were beautiful. Anybody that got to see them learned a lot. We also did have some information that was presented. The class of 2023's graduation requirements are going to be changing, specifically with implications for physical education components. We also discussed two curriculum changes that will be discussed in deliberated items, Manufacturing Design Curriculum and Accounting II Curriculum. We did also set forth our 2019 committee meeting schedule, which will stick with the third Wednesday of the month at 6:30.
Any questions? If not, I think we're ready for our student reports, and I think Logan is going to lead us off.
Welcome back, Logan. Logan was in the school play, and so we had to miss a couple of board meetings, but you're back.
I am back, better than ever. Okay. Good evening, Dr. Moreau, Dr. Carbone, Dr. Galloway, and Commissioners. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday break. Today, I would love to report a few of the things I've been a part of. I took an Introduction to Communications class through the High School Partnership Program with Tungstus Community College. I wanted to take this class so I could get some understanding of what a communication major might involve. The class was on Monday nights from 6:30 to 9:30, and even though I'd rather be at home during that timeout on a Monday night, it was so worth going to class. All my classmates and I got along very well, and our professor gave us assignments which were fun and engaging. On December 10th, I took my final, and it was sad to say goodbye to those classmates who I've grown so close to since September. When I went to the orientation, I only saw a handful of students, including me, actually taking advantage of the program. It would allow you to get a fee waiver when applying to Tungstus, a half-credit for your high school, and three credits for when you go to Tungstus. You can even transfer those credits to another college. Applications are emailed by guidance to all 11th and 12th graders for fall and spring semesters. Students with a 3.0 GPA or higher, along with their counselor recommendation, have to apply to Tungstus directly. Tungstus then notifies the students if they've been accepted for the program. This is a valuable program for students who can attend the evening courses. Another course that taught me valuable life lessons this year so far is AMDM, taught by Ms. Maitri. It has taught me how to interpret math in realistic ways, like finding out the pressure in a car tire, or finding probability using tree diagrams. It gave me a better understanding on how math could actually be used in real-life scenarios. Now I won't end up on the side of a busy highway, and I would be able to calculate the pressure I can put into my tires. Bristol Eastern also had their production of a Christmas carol this month. It was a very exciting time for the cast and crew to show off their hard work. We had great crowds for all three shows, and the craft fair going on before and after the shows were a hit. There were a lot of traffic for those local businesses. We are now preparing for the musical, which will be Seussical, premiering on May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. I hope you all enjoy the show. Lastly, I was given the honor by Ms. Paquette and Dr. Kelby Rogers to be a Fox 61 student news reporter. It's such an amazing program for students like myself to learn more on how to report a story. Fox even does a special on the weekend news where they air the segment "They Want to Show Off." There's even a chance to walk the red carpet at the award ceremony if our school gets nominated for five possible categories. Talk about living the big life. On Wednesday, December 5th, I reported my first story at the Bristol Senior Center for the Wii Bowling Championship. I reported all day and had multiple interviews with the bowlers from 25 different towns, the organizer of the event, and a Bristol Eastern National Honor Society student. There were times where I had to think of questions on the spot, and it taught me that there's so much more to reporting than standing in front of a camera and holding a microphone. It gives you more of a chance to explore, and myself, a more, better chance to explore a path towards journalism. Thank you.
Logan, before you leave, is there any chance that we could have a vignette of Seussical before it performs here at the Board of Education, like one number?
At the April Board Meeting.
At the April Board Meeting, if you could come in with just a vignette of like one or, you know, one or two songs.
I think I can arrange that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Now, you had to follow that, Abby. Abby, good.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Abby Van Christie, and I am the student representative for Bristol Central. I hope everyone's New Year is off to a wonderful and productive start, and that your holiday break was relaxing and stress-free. This evening, I'll be speaking about the different classes I have taken in high school and the lessons I have learned that I will use for the rest of my life. During my high school years, I've taken various courses from no brainers to hair pulling classes. However, each one has left this me a lesson that I will need as I embark on my career, and even just valuable life lessons. One major course that has instilled valuable life lessons within me was my AP Psychology class. In that class, I learned the necessities that my body and mind need to function well, and even aspects of social situations. For example, during psychology, we learn about the different levels of sleep and the amount that is healthy for a specific age group. Psychology enforced the importance of a healthy mind and the consequences of not giving the body its essential needs. As a senior who is involved in many activities inside and outside of the school, it is easy to become mentally drained. I found that it was very helpful to know how to properly take care of the body through rest and diet. Another lesson that I learned in psychology was a bit more manipulative. In one unit, we were taught the various ways of persuading people, and why a person is more inclined to do a task they would normally not be willing to do. For example, I learned about the popular group think phenomenon. When a person is in a group of peers, they are more likely to agree with what the rest of the group is thinking. This helped me to understand the aspects of peer pressure, and even a way to get a person to agree with my mindset. My friend also agrees that psychology has taught her essential lessons. However, she learned important organizational and study habits from the amount of new vocabulary that had been introduced. It was also helpful that there was a unit of the most successful types of memorization for the brain. Another course that has instilled within me valuable lessons is my AP Statistics class. Statistics teaches me critical thinking, as well as the correct approach to successful data, and why data may not be valid. In addition to my statistics class, I'm also taking AP Calculus BC. Yes, I know, a daily class. However, even the class is very challenging, allows me to think independently, and that a little struggle is good. I learned the importance of hard work and determination through endless late-night study sessions, and repeatedly staying after school for help when necessary. I have also learned the rewards of working hard and not giving up when things become difficult. A little frustration can actually be healthy at times. Although I may take it for granted, the classes I have taken have instilled in me life lessons that have shaped my character. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. In my report, I would like to highlight what Dr. Moreau talked about in some remarks earlier about our reception this evening for the Bristol Education Foundation. The Ed Foundation is really one of the greatest community collaborations that we have. We have educators working with people in the business community to support the education programs that we funded. We heard tonight about $19,000 in grants, and we're very fortunate that we have a foundation that provides us money. The Roberts Foundation provides a significant grant for that every year. It's close to $10,000. So the rest of the money that we need to raise to meet our goals to distribute $15,000 to $20,000 a year, we have to go out and raise. So if anybody has any connections to businesses or benefactors that want to provide some resources to an educational organization like the Bristol Education Foundation, I think you've heard over the last several months what a valuable organization it is, and how it works to really better our schools and our communities. So just keep that in your, top of your mind. I do want to highlight that it's not on my agenda for my remarks, but we are going to be having a legislative breakfast with our local delegation Saturday morning here in this room. It's at 9:00 AM. I promised them that we would be out by 10:15. So we will have a short presentation by the lobbyists from CAEB, who will provide CAEB's legislative priorities, as well as some of their task force reports. And I've invited the City Council and the Board of Finance to this meeting as well, as well as all of you in the community, and Administration has invited their senior staff to attend as well. And then the next thing I wanted to speak about was our community conversation about equity inclusiveness and excellence, which is going to happen tomorrow evening at 5:30 at Bristol Eastern. You know, I think this is one of the most important conversations that we've had as a Board of Education with our community. You know, if you look around, lots of the organizations that I am on for education are having the same kind of conversation, whether it's the State Department of Education is having the same conversation, CAEB is having this same kind of conversation, Crack, who I've been involved with for almost 14 years, has this kind of conversation all the time. And now you're starting to see, even the business community is starting to have this kind of conversation. I'm a member of a professional education organization, and I was just reading their, one of their highlights of a symposium that they had this year in Boston, and it talked about these very same topics. Much of the diversity in the '70s, the '80s, and '90s focused around civil rights and affirmative action. After the post-2000 census revealed how much the country was really changing, this has caused corporate America to rethink how the marketplace is changing. Now business leaders are beginning to see and ask, how can diversity and inclusion impact my bottom line? And the speaker actually delineated quite clearly the difference between diversity and inclusiveness. And it's sort of cute, but I think it's worth repeating to you, and diversity is being invited to the dance, and inclusion is being asked to dance. And I think as we think about this topic, I think it's nice to keep that parallel in mind. There is much support, research to support inclusion strategies. PricewaterhouseCoopers revealed that a study of 85% of CEOs indicated that their inclusion strategies have impacted their bottom line. McKinsey found that 15% of companies outperform where gender diverse, and 35% where ethnically diverse, outperform their peers. Unconscious bias. Everyone holds beliefs about various social and identity groups. These biases stem from a tendency to organize social worlds by categorizing. Stab judgments are not always positive. When diversity and inclusion is first brought up, usually a lot of support for the idea occurs, but once you start getting into changing policy or other issues, you start to see some pushback. And I think that's why we need to create a shared view in order to proceed. We need institutional commitment, we need management readiness, and we need the market conditions. And I think the market conditions are right for us. When you see all these other organizations addressing this issue, that's what I'm talking about when I talk about market conditions. But we also need to make sure that we have, need to understand the metrics. And in our case, that means what is the composition? Who is interviewed? How many offers are attended? How many hires and promotions? Training? We need to make sure that people are aware of their biases, and that they can counterbalance and make better decisions. Support and facilitate the environment with coaching and mentoring. We know that the conversation tomorrow was just the first step. This event will help us all develop individual strategies to look at one another through, not through a deficit lens, but through where we share commonality. I encourage any and all who are here tonight to bring their family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, so we as a community can begin this journey of learning each other's story. Tomorrow again, it's at 5:30 at the Bristol Eastern Library, and the focus... What?
Bristol Eastern Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, what did I say?
Library.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I apologize. Okay. And that concludes my remarks on that. And then I did want to just share with you a Memorial Boulevard Arts Magnet School update. We're in the process where we were interviewing construction people who were going to build the school, and so we had four highly qualified firms that came in for an interview last week. Probably say that any one of the four firms could certainly do the work, and we'd be very comfortable picking any of them. We have a couple of committee members here in the audience, Dave Proleski and Dr. Dieter is our Chair, and so they maybe want to add some to my comments as I finish. But, so the committee went through all four interviews, and, you know, using as a backstop that, yes, any one of them could have been, any one of them could have been picked, and we would have been perfectly happy. You know, they all were very highly qualified, they all built schools all around the state and all around the region, and could have accomplished the job. But the committee was clear and unanimous that they wanted to have the joint venture of Downs and Damato build and rebuild this school at Memorial Boulevard. They believe that they had not only the local knowledge, because Damato had renovated a similar vintage building at Jennings, but they also had the expertise of Downs, who's built many schools across Connecticut. In fact, they're in the process of building two schools, correct, right now, the Aerospace Academy and the Antares Academy. So they're a very well-known construction firm, and the committee felt that it was the best value proposition when we looked at their expertise and skill set, as well as the cost of the services that they were going to require. I don't know if Dave or Mike want to add anything to that, but that was really all the committee did, was select that firm, so that firm has been selected. So our next task is to hire an environmental hygienist? No, the commissioning agent. Commissioning agent is yes. We already hired the environmental hygienist, so the commissioning agent will be the next task at the meeting on the 10th, and then the committee will start doing its real hard work. And that concludes my remarks under my report, and we will now move to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm going to start my report, piggybacking on what you've said in talking about the programming committee for the Memorial Boulevard Arts Magnet School. We've met, I believe, four times. We toured the Waterbury Arts Magnet, a group of us as well. And at this stage, we're working with the architect on trying to figure out what classroom spaces and large area spaces we need in the building to support the program that will be developed. We've determined that our high school students will receive their core education, which is their English, their social studies, their math, and their science at their home high school, and then their art strand at the Magnet School. This is very important in terms of the Board being able to staff the school, so they won't need additional core staff for the high school academic core program. Very much in tune with what Bristol Tech does. Those students come to their high school, get their core, and then go to Bristol Tech for their technical education strand, whatever they have chosen. We have not finalized, we're going to be meeting with the architects, a small group of us, tomorrow as well. Middle school students will be receiving a taste of everything, as they do now, where they take the four different options that are available to them, so that they can make a choice as ninth graders as to what pathway they want to pursue. And again, it's really important to remember that we're not talking about an arts performance school. We're talking about a school where students will learn all kinds of design skills using technology that are applicable to many different careers out after high school, including all the manufacturing opportunities there in town, ESPN, which is the gamut from lighting, sound, production, and all those behind the camera and using the camera professions that students may choose to go into. So this is the monthly update of the district priorities that I have been providing to each month. Priority of inspiring and cultivating talent. You can see the actions there. We have two new supervisors of elementary, secondary, mathematics, science, and information. Jamie Reckenberg, who's here, Jamie, and Gina Rivera, who's going to be appointed this evening. Our science teacher on special assignment, Rochelle Schwartz, has gone through a whole coaching cycle with elementary teachers to help them better understand the units that have the new science standards. And our elementary grade-level teams continue to meet during the school day without the use of subs to work with math and literacy coaches and plan collaboratively. The highest value that you can get in working with educators is having them work together collaboratively, so that they each bring their strengths to the situation, and they don't double-effort the lesson plans, so that they're all writing the same thing. Instead, they share what they know. It can also be experience-based, so you have a teacher who's been teaching for 10 or 15 years, and you have a new teacher who comes into the group, and that collaboration helps to professionally develop the new teacher. Organizational operational effectiveness. It's budget time. We are looking at putting together a budget. In fact, we're going to be looking to the Board to find some dates for budget workshops. I think this year, we won't need as many. Last year, we spent a lot of time really helping you to understand all the guts of the budget. One driving factor will be Dr. Dieter speaking about the number of students who've come in since we set our budget last year to this point, and the impact that has that we don't have any control over on our budget. We plan for what we know exists, and then we have students who enter, some of them already outplaced. You met Javier Rosario last month, our Safety and Security Director. He's continuing to work with teams on emergency situations, on entry protocols in the building, and in rolling out something called the Raptor system, which scans a driver's license and will let us know if the person is on the sex offenders list, if they want to come into the building. And we have a board policy that talks about sex offenders who need to come to a child's meeting, and we have a protocol for that person making an appointment and being escorted to the meeting and then escorted out of the school. And Mrs. Brown submitted a $1.15 million safety grant. We know there's a lot of competition. There's a total of $10 million available, and we're hoping we'll get some of that pot because we didn't get it in the last round. Community engagement, tomorrow night, as Chairman Wilson said, and many of our board members will be there. We've actually posted as a workshop, because I believe we'll have a quorum of board members. You won't be taking any votes, but it's required that we do that. We have 58 people registered and another 16 to 18 table facilitators. People will come in, they can grab some pizza, come over to their table, they'll have a name tag, the name tag will tell them what table they're sitting at, and we've really mixed people up. In fact, Dr. Carbone used the old count-off, 1 through 10, random sampling, and just took the list we had, and that's how people are divided up. There won't be a tremendous amount of heavy lifting by the facilitators, but just to keep things moving. And we're pretty excited about that, because our goal was to get 80 to 100 people, and we're going to be close to that 80 number. So that, believe it or not, is a really high turnout for an event like this. So...
As I've told you, Waterbury just did this, and they only got 65. So if we get 80, we're doing well.
Yes. Just to point out, another thing that we do every month is our Dress Down Day, and this month, in fact, Commissioner Dubby, we need to get you that check.
I got it.
Oh, you got it?
Yes.
Okay, super. We raised, as you see, $2,315.75, and we divided it in three ways, because the Christian Fellowship Center is no longer in existence, so instead of four ways, it was three, and it's $712.92 to each one of those organizations. I delivered the one to the Salvation Army, and just the look of joy on the woman's face when I handed her the check made my year, because they were trying to figure out how they were going to have enough toys for the children who were going to come there. And she said, I know what I'm doing with this, we're going to go shopping for toys. So that was awesome. So every month, we raise money for a different group, and it really makes a tremendous difference. And I'm really proud of our employees for donating $5 to Dress Down on one Friday a month. All good stuff.
Can I just add quickly that I did tell the director, "A necessity is covered," and she teared up. She literally teared up, so thank you very much. She was...
Hey, thank you to all of our employees. I'm just fortunate enough to be able to deliver the check, which is, remember that show, The Millionaire? If any of you are old enough, it's a quick deal. it's a quick deal. Learner focus, the most important work that we do. Several of our schools have adopted social-emotional learning programs. And if you were here for the mini-grant reception, quite a few of the grants went to facilitate some of the materials some of them want for these. It's creating a community of learners, helping children feel comfortable with other children, learning some social skills that they may not have learned when they came to school, but that are really critical for their success in school. And assessments are part of the work that we do and PSAT results are being reviewed by our high school teachers. Those are given in ninth and 10th grade, also in 11th. They use those data to try to figure out what changes we might make, maybe even in the pacing of a unit based on when the assessment is given and what areas our students are strong in and what areas we need to work on so that when they take the SAT, they are the most prepared we can possibly have them to be. And that concludes updates. Are there any questions?
Go ahead. You look like you had one first.
Yes.
Let's see if it's the same one.
Dr. Row, I had a question in regards to the update on the Arts Magnet School work that had already been discussed. And you had said that the, for the high school core education, that it will take place at the home high school and that the arts education will take place at the Arts Magnet School. And I was just curious if you have gotten to the part in the discussion if there are some students that have IEPs that require related services, whether or not those would be taken care of at the high school, the home high school, or at the arts education, or whether that'd be an individualized assessment for each student?
Absolutely individual. I mean, that's what my EEP is.
Right.
When we toured the Waterbury Magnet, I actually asked a question about students with special needs being part of their program and they have all the services available there. So if a student needs to be in a co-taught class for an academic, that would occur at the high school. But if they needed some kind of adaptive physical technology at, when they were there for their arts portion of the day, absolutely. There may be some students who the program just isn't appropriate for, but that would take a full discussion at the PPT of what the needs a student has and how those accommodations could be made within the program.
Okay, thank you. Also, the planning for the related services outside of the actual classroom.
We are dedicating classroom space. When we talk about dividing up rooms, there'll be a room for OT and PT. There'll be rooms, both middle school and high school, for special services where a student may need to come out of the mainstream for some of their accommodations. So that is part of-
Part of the plan.
Looking at the floor plan of the school and where you're putting things, definitely part of the conversation.
Thanks. Thanks for your update.
It's very helpful having Dr. Dieter as the chair of that committee to get that expertise at every single meeting.
Great. Related question. You were very specific to say that the high school students would experience something similar to that they have at Bristol Tech where they get their core classes. Middle school students?
Will have their whole program at-
The whole program at, that's the way I did understand that.
At that age, it doesn't seem that they'd be able to transition really well.
So I can go back and-
And the high school AB schedule is really ideal for doing this. And the Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts is a half-day program. That's how it started as a Magnet School where students got their academics at their school and then came to Hartford for their arts programming. So it's a model that we're replicating basically.
Excellent. Very good. And this one is more a little bit logistical and I hate to kind of harp on communication, but I understand you, it sounds like you've had four meetings. Is this the same group? And I know I was late to the table. I'm not much of a dancer, but I like to be invited to the dance. These four meetings, are they, were they part of that Memorial Boulevard Arts Subcommittee you have, or is that a separate group that you just referenced earlier?
This group, the programming Subcommittee, which is the same, by the way, we had one when we built Green Hills and when we built West Bristol. We bring together teachers, administrators-
Excellent.
And they're telling us what they think we need. Now, I will tell you, we're going to have to knock some bells and whistles off of it because dream big. When you ask people who do that, we're going to do as much of what they dream about as we can within the financial constraints of the city and the Board of Education.
Excellent. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. The teachers and administrators were involved.
Yes, absolutely.
The only other-
In fact, teachers who were at that board meeting or that committee meeting who spoke last year, I made sure I invited them.
Excellent. It would be nice as a board commissioner to know that those meetings were happening, is one thing I will say. And I don't know if that was something that I missed or not, but I tend to-
It's not ever been a board function. It's always been a professional staff function. I can send you the dates.
Yeah, it was similar to them more of a-
We have to understand that a building committee is not a Board of Education meeting. It's a building committee, which is a city meeting.
Yep. No, I understand that. And I had asked for that a couple of months ago.
I just don't want you to feel buffed. I mean, it's-
No, no, I get it. I want to understand the process and again, just make sure that we're knowing what happens as the process happens, not months after the process happens. I think that's a fair request on my part.
I don't have a date for our next meeting, or I would give it to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We now move to the consent agenda, which is items 8-1 through, 8-1, 8-1D. So does anybody wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, allow 8 through 1.8.
Okay. Anybody else wish anything else to be pulled out of the consent agenda? If not, I believe you're ready to vote. All in favor, accept 8-1A. I lost my place with 8-1A. All in favor, say aye.
We need a mo-, do we do a motion?
Oh, we didn't do a motion.
I will move that we approve all of them, but 8.1.
8-1A. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion has been properly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? We will discuss that under old business. Right, Ms. Everett?
New business.
New business, new business. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Juliana LaRue from 109 Cherry Mill Drive, if you'll come up to the speaker's table. We just ask you if you would address your comments to the chair and if you'd try to keep your comments to three minutes if you could.
Yes, thank you. I'm Juliana LaRue. As you all know, I'm an alumni of Bristol Eastern High School. I recently just graduated. I made my legacy at the school between varsity track and varsity girls soccer. And I now go to Southern New Hampshire University and I am studying environmental science with a concentration in sustainability and I am double majoring in political science. So as my first semester went on, I wrote a research essay on green roofs. And I thought it was a great idea to say this idea to you guys, to maybe put a green roof on one of the new high schools, Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central, or the new tech school that's coming. There are many environmental benefits, social benefits, economic benefits, and health benefits. Green roofs can give students, teachers, and the community. And I think it would be a great idea to propose this idea to you guys. I have been working closely with Logan Zedan, Ellen Zobo Sasu, and many engineers, and my old environmental teacher, Elizabeth Delania. I was in her AP class. I said that green roofs purify water, increase biodiversity, save buildings money on electricity, and contribute positively to people's health. Green roofs are beneficial to many people, communities, and the environment. I encourage you all to take a look into my research and think about constructing a green roof on Bristol Eastern High School. Now I have my 10-page essay. If any of you guys would like to take it or read it, that is all. I hope you had-
We would like to see it.
Okay. Do you want me to give it to any of you?
Yeah.
Give it to Ms. Everett.
She'll make sure all the commissioners get to see it. Can you just tell me this quick, briefly, what is a green roof?
Okay, so a green roof is a garden or a constructed garden on top of a roof. There is two types of green roofs you can do. You can put any types of plants, fruits, vegetables. Usually, plants that can survive during the wintertime, so we don't have to have maintenance up there 24/7. But green roofs do involve maintenance. And I have talked with people from Bristol Eastern, municipalities. My father works for the city of Bristol and I have talked to him about it a little bit. I am still conducting my research and I'm doing an undergrad graduate research day at my school about it and I'm going to propose the same idea at my college. Yeah, it's basically a garden on top of a roof. Simple, but there are many aspects to it that, as you want.
The only thing I'll say to you is we did look at this for solar panels about 10 years ago and we found that we couldn't do it because of the weight and all-
Right.
Of the solar panels. So I'll be very interested to read your report and see if there's a way.
Right.
Because I think there probably is some sentiment that this would be something that we could interest, especially now that we're doing the Boulevard. It would be opportune time to provide that to our architects to see if they could build that into the plan.
Right. I think it would be a great way to start sustainability with in schools. I think not a lot of Connecticut schools are into environmentally friendly actions. And I think Bristol Eastern or Bristol Central or any of the middle schools, it would look very good if we started that action to fight climate change, to be more sustainable within food, community, students, classes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now down to deliberated items. 10.1, the midterm schedule for schools.
Mrs. Forten, she's coming.
Not sure I'm going to top Juliana's idea there, but, so in January of 2018, the Board of Education approved having a half-day exam schedule for our high schools. Since these dates weren't on the board-approved calendar for this year, you do need to approve the half-day exam schedule for our high schools this year. This year, provided there are no snow cancellations, fingers crossed on that, we're doing well. Probably just going to make us have one. Students will have the midterm exams and the half-day schedule on January 18th, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. In the event that school is canceled due to snow, prior to January 18th, the exam schedule and half-days move forward from that date.
We recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the half-day schedule for high schools on January 18th, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. I'll second.
Kristen seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, I believe you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now, when we pass our next calendar, we'll build that in so we won't have to approve these separately in subsequent years because we changed from what we had been doing before. Curriculum revisions. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jamie Reckenberg. I'm the new STEM supervisor for seconded. I'm here to showcase accounting II and manufacturing design. But before I get into that, I wanted to share some of the goals for Bristol's CTE programming. We really want our kids to be, to enter those CTE programs and to get into as many technical fields as possible. We want to give our students experiences to demonstrate career and technical skills such as Logan was discussing earlier this evening. We want our students to engage in real-world situations and problem-solving experiences. We want them to employ instructional methods and interdisciplinary activities to stimulate student interest in CTE. And we want to develop student leadership capacity through the programs that we offer through CTE. Accounting II is the first curricular revision that I'm going to present to you. The rationale for this revision is that the standards for the state of Connecticut were recently changed. We wanted to update those standards and update our curriculum to meet the needs of those standards. We also wanted to make sure that our students had access to college credits. College credit earned through high school gives our students a number of opportunities as well as a financial gain. If our kids, if our students move into Tungstis or they transfer those credits from, to UConn, that's a $2,100 savings for them. And they're earning it for free through our Bristol programs. If the students maintain those accounting credits within Tungstis, that's a $571 savings that they will not have to purchase credits out of their pocket when they enter their post-secondary. So, all right, so accounting II is, the prerequisite to accounting II is accounting I. The students will get college credit through Tungstis for three credits for their, towards their accounting 100. The accounting II curriculum will give students three credits towards the ACC 113, Principles of Financial Accounting. All of the curriculum that has been written for this course has been approved by Tungstis Community College and also aligns to the Connecticut framework. In order for our teachers to write this curriculum, they really did have to unpack what Tungstis was looking for in their, in their curriculum as well as what the standards were, were looking for from Connecticut. So when you look at your packet for these two revisions, you will find that there are unwrapped standards pages which really showcase the components that are relating what we are building in to the curriculum from those standards and from, from Tungstis. The second part of each curricular revision are the essential questions. This is what's really important. This is that learner piece that Dr. Murrow was talking about. In the curriculum, you will find our student objectives are performance-based. Our kids, our, our students are doing the work. They are engaging in real-world phenomenon and really starting to see what it feels like in the real world. I do want to show you just a little video clip of accounting in our classroom. And you'll see that it is very performance-based. The students are given packets. They're, they're processing the content within those packets. They're tabulating through their accounting programs and so on. These skills that they're, that students are gaining from the accounting II curriculum carry over to Bristol's vision of the graduate as well. I'm only going to point out the financial literacy component of that vision of the graduate, but there are other connections there as well for your viewing pleasure. I do have to thank the two teachers that spent the time to revise this curriculum to meet the standards of Tungstis as well as the state. Those are Mrs. Laurie Robert and Mrs. Sharon Jacques. So I want to thank them publicly for that work. And I'm asking for your approval to move this curricular revision forward.
I'll make a motion to move the accounting II curriculum forward.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Jen and seconded by Tina. Are there any questions or comments on the curriculum? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second curricular revision that I wanted to bring to you tonight was for manufacturing design. Manufacturing design is probably one of the most exciting curricular revisions that I have to talk about. And this is the third part of a three-part course series designed to prepare students for certification. So just like in accounting, our students were able to come out with college credit. In this case, our students will leave the classroom with Master Cam certification. In order for students to get that certification, they have to complete three courses. The first course or prerequisite is automation and robotics. And then students have a choice of CAD and solid model- And then students have a choice of CAD and solid modeling, introduction to engineering, tools and materials, or principles of engineering as their second course. The third course would be this manufacturing design course. I do want to show you some of the amazing things that we are offering our students within our CTE programming related to manufacturing and design. In this first video, you're going to see introduction to CAD where the students are developing their designs electronically. They're doing some really amazing things. And then taking those CAD designs and modeling solid figures to serve a purpose. This is one of the prerequisite courses to the manufacturing design program. The second video is going to showcase automation and robotics as well as tools and materials. And again, you'll notice how engaged our students are in the learning process as well as all of the really awesome experiences that we're providing our kids, our students, as they move out into post-secondary. However, it is really incredible to watch our kids, our students do these things.
It's interesting to pick UMass Lowell and big engineering school.
So the rationale for the revision of this course is it was, this is actually a replacement to Automation and Robotics II. And the rationale for this replacement is to make sure that, or to give our students the opportunity to leave high school with a certification under their belt. The certification is through Master Cam. Master Cam is known nationally for certifying people for manufacturing. The benefits to Master Cam for employers within Bristol and the surrounding region is that they know that they are getting quality employees that have passed all of the associated exams. The other thing is for our students that are leaving, this gives them an amazing opportunity to walk in and find employment. Just as with Accounting II, our teachers had to really identify what the needs were for the Master Cam certification as well as tying to the Connecticut standards for tech ed. So you'll see that within those pages that were provided to you, you will see those unwrapped components as well as the essential pieces, the essential questions. Again, just as in accounting, we want our students doing the heavy lifting and the hard work and really performing. So you will see that our common learning experiences and our objectives are performance-based. And to give you an idea of what Master Cam is, there's a small clip. One of the student learning objectives is to design a part, a working part, through the Master Cam program and then to create it. And you can see that happening here. So again, there are significant overlaps between these curricular revisions and Bristol's vision of the graduate. I would really want to focus here on that goal-directed component of the vision of the graduate. There's significant overlap there as well as information literacy. I do need to thank Mr. Greg Diaz and Mr. Petrowski for their time and attention to developing this course. Are there any questions related to this curriculum revision?
One quick question. Offered at both high schools, I assume, and we have the capability to do this today? Were there major upgrades from the previous?
Nope, there's no change. Alright.
So we recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve Manufacturing Design curriculum.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion has been made by Jen and seconded by Kristen to approve all the curriculum. If there's no other questions, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move on to policy revisions.
Dr. Dieter.
Good evening again. The policy revision is with regards to Policy 5144.2, and this is the use of exclusionary timeout settings. This policy is required, the change is required by a change to the statute that occurred this last legislative session. And it allows, it provides four guidelines for the use of exclusionary timeout in our schools. There are two types of exclusionary timeout, that which would occur within a classroom in a designated space. And the second would be an exclusionary timeout where a student is removed from the classroom to a comparable space within the building. And the policy also gives suggestions with respect to training and documentation. The policy was reviewed in, the proposed policy, I should say, was reviewed in total at the recent Policy Committee Session prior to the holiday break. Be happy to entertain any specific questions?
I had a quick question. And first of all, I have to give you my apologies for not being able to attend the policy meeting because I would have reserved my question for there. But it's really, does any of the policy change require any training or retraining of staff?
It requires that, so the quick answer is yes. It will require training. That training doesn't go beyond what we currently provide. We're not required to go beyond what we currently provide.
Thank you.
Move to approve Policy Inclusion 5144.2, Use of Exclusionary Timeout Settings as recommended by the Board of Education Policy Committee.
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded. Motion was made by Tina, seconded by Joe. Any other comments or questions about the motion? If not, I believe you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're now on to new business. So this ever, we're going to deliberate 8.1.
A.
A, okay. Do you want to go first, Mr. Grobowski?
Sure. So obviously 8.1.8, Initiative Retirement, along with Dr. Moreau. Just a brief comment, I'm very sad that you're retiring. I've spoken too in-depth about this. Just some things. When I came on board to this Board of Education, I was 18-years-old. So obviously I had some concerns, right? Will people listen to me? Will I be pushed out of things? And I will say that Dr. Moreau was always a go-to person, someone I can privately talk to, someone I can ask questions to, a mentor, if you will. I'm very glad of the relationship we have built and all the questions I've asked, all the answers I've gotten, and I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you. And it helps, you're going to be a social studies teacher and that's what I taught.
Anybody else wish to address this comment?
You know, it's a little bittersweet for me as well. I've been sitting at the table with Dr. Moreau for probably 26-years of her tenure here in Bristol, ever since she was at least appointed as principal at Bingham, you know, where my kids were at the time, till the last 16-years here on the board. And, you know, we probably know more about each other than we probably should. But it's, she's helped me along the way with my own children in school and she's really shown me what an education leader ought to be. You know, some people talk about, you know, it's kids-first and they sort of, you know, say it rote, but I think Dr. Moreau really means it and lives it. She looks at students and in her management decisions and what kind of opportunity gap do they have and how can we, you know, fix that opportunity gap? She's done it all her life since I've known her here on the board and, you know, we're very fortunate that she extended for this year to get us through this transition and stabilize the district and, you know, I know we'll have more opportunity to have some comments, so I'm going to leave my comments brief, but I want her to know and the community to know that we're losing a very valued educator who's really given her life to this district. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure to work in the Bristol schools for almost 27-years. I actually started as an intern at Bristol Eastern High School in the spring of 1992. Some of you weren't born yet out there. This is going to complete my 42nd-year as an educator. It's hard for me to even imagine that that many years have passed. And I have been so privileged to work with amazing board members over time who put yourselves out. I don't think the public realizes the amount of time and the amount of abuse that board members take. And they do it as volunteers. It's outstanding. The teachers, administrators, and the students that I've had the privilege of working with, and the parents like Dave Proleski, who, all those Bingham parents, I still talk to when I run into them in town and my kids who are all grown-up. It's really a joy to have been here long enough to have seen those kids become productive adults in our community. So I thank you all.
Okay, thank you. I think we have to vote on that, Joe.
Oh, you do.
Would you entertain a motion to accept? Is it eight? I don't have it in front of me, so is it eight?
8.1.8. Making motion to accept 8.1.8, Initiative Retirement, effective June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, this motion has been made and seconded. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
I would just like to say thank you very much. The long tenure of service that you have had is tremendous. And thank you, Dr. Moreau, for all that you have done. I know it's not easy on your end either, so...
I appreciate the remarks. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Information, we'll start on this end? Information? Joe?
No. Nothing. No information this evening.
Jen?
No, just me. I don't have any information.
We're going to start the other way around now, we're going to go backwards. Kristen, we'll start with liaison reports.
So my liaison report, I just have something to discuss with our Greater Bristol Special Education Parent Teacher Organization. They sponsored a training that was conducted by the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center on Tuesday, December 11th, and they partnered with our location here in Bristol at Chapter 126 Sports and Fitness Center to hold the nuts and bolts of special education training. It was very well-attended by both parents, families, and caregivers in our Bristol community and surrounding areas. In January, on January 8th, they're going to hold the second training session, also being conducted by the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center at the Bristol Septu, at their request, same location. And the name of the training is "How Do I Know If My Child Is Making Progress?" This certainly is expected to also be well-attended. The board will also be reaching out to Mr. Rosario to request that he come speak to the parents, the concerned parents that come to our meetings and might have questions or concerns about security and safety procedures with our populations that may have disabilities or individualized security plans. And so we're hoping to schedule that for February. I'll give the microphone.
Jen?
So I'm here to report again on West Bristol School. December was a month of giving back at the WB. During Grinchmas, students collected 2,156 non-perishable food items which were donated to Necessities Covered. A school-wide pajama day was held and $548 was donated to CCMC. The Wounded Warrior Project bottle and can drive is still underway and they are halfway to their 10,000 bottle and can goal. Just before winter break, students and staff showed their winter spirit by participating in a door decorating contest and holiday sing-along. And that was my report.
Ms. Cagiano?
I have a report from Chippin Hill Middle School. Principal Fitzpatrick wanted to, first of all, I had a long meeting with her, which was nice. I had not caught up at Chippin Hill with the changing of the guards for a while and heard some of the same things over again. So as we look to change our structure of schools, those, you know, independent, I'm forgetting the name of it, it's been after the break, the way we have the seventh grade set up, where individual teams, yes, we definitely need to look at that because I keep hearing that from my middle-school connections. But her report states the Chippin Hill community cares in their thoughts, words, and actions. The Chippin Hill staff teaches cares, expectations to students every day, and also engage in these values themselves. Kathy Crowick, our social-emotional coordinator, and Officer Travisano, the SRO, collaborated with Student Leadership Group to kick off a holiday food drive. Chippin Hill Middle School collected 423 food items which were donated to the Chippin Hill Middle School families and St. Vincent de Paul Shelter. Chippin Hill Middle School staff also donated seven turkeys that were combined with the food items that were collected through the drive to put together a holiday dinner for those families. Jennifer Broderick, the school counselor, initiated a giving tree that provided holiday gifts for 17 families and a total of 48 children. Chippin Hill Middle School staff members nominated the family that might benefit from this giving tree, and all families represented on the giving tree were selected by staff members. Staff members then purchased gifts for all of the children and family, which is excellent. Currently, plans are in the works to launch a mittens drive and collect donations for my cousin's closet. Hats, mittens, gloves, scarves will be donated both to my cousin's closet and a local shelter. So my cousin's closet is a closet of clothing and accessories for students who are in need of clothing for various reasons. They're starting to collect all types of these clothing accessories now, so if the community wants to get involved, they're more than welcome. That's it.
Ms. Cagiano?
I do not have a report.
Ms. Grobowski? City Councilman Kelly?
I do. It's a new year and I'd like to share some thoughts and observations with everyone. And it involves our Board of Ed commissioners. It would be nice if we saw an increase in partnership and inclusion by our Democratic commissioners. I think we would all benefit from that. And please remember that the Board of Education is not your own self-funded little fief. On the other side, I think that Commissioner Cagiano has to realize how conflicted he is in his position as a Republican town chairman head and a Board of Ed commissioner. He seems to at times have a hard time to distinguish between the two. And in particular, I'll reference a recent letter to the Bristol Observer where you question many things regarding the Arts Magnet School, a school, by the way, that you voted for. And it seems as if you don't know when you write this letter as to whether your Board of Commissioner hat is on or your hat of the RTC is on. So it really doesn't benefit anyone when you're using that position to further the political agenda of your party. It really degrades what is attempted here by the Board of Ed as a whole. So you may or may not be aware of that, but it's not helping our children with that approach. And people have spoken about it, and I'm really surprised it hasn't been brought up until this point. until this point because you seem to be a bit of a rock-thrower and a contrarian, and nobody benefits from that. So you're welcome to a seat on the bus if you can approach this in a bipartisan manner, but there's no rocks allowed on the bus. So if you can put down the rock and approach this in a bipartisan manner, I think everyone benefits from it because it's not a Democrat thing, it's not a Republican thing. It's a thing to better the educational system for our children here in town. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I'm done with my liaison report.
My liaison report, I just want to remind, I think I mentioned it last month, that Crepe and Cave have a joint legislative session at the Capitol. Actually, it's at the Legislative Office Building at 8:00 AM on January 24th, which the Cave area director and all the legislators get together, at least legislators that show up, and we talk about issues that are of concern. Mostly, it's about mandates. It's typically what the conversation is about, but sometimes we have some good conversations. So if anybody's interested in that, it'll be on January 24th at 8:00 AM at the Legislative Office Building. Having no other business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved. And seconded.
Second.
And we don't need to vote, but all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.